Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock on this Monday, October fourteen, two thousand and twenty four. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this evening. We have several items up for discussion tonight. The first is the Pierce Transit Destination two thousand and forty five Long Range Plan. And for this, we're pleased to have Darren Stavish, the Principal Planner, and I think it was Anna Peterson here as well.
Exactly.
Very good. So Mr. Stavish is here from Pierce Transit. Mr. Stavish, the floor is yours. And the mocks, mics are hot. Don't lean into it. It sounds like you can hear me okay?
Yeah. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Whelan and Council, fellow council members. Thank you for this invitation, especially on such short notice. We were invited here today to brief you on our all new Destination two thousand and forty five Long Range Plan or L R P. You'll hear that acronym used quite a bit throughout the presentation. So what is a long range plan? Why are we doing this? A few of the goals and objectives of this all new long range plan are provided here, but we will go into them in more detail on the next slide. I do want to point out that this work will complement other recently completed, completed studies at Pierce Transit, namely our Stream B R T System Expansion Study and Bus System Recovery and Restoration Plan, both of which were finished last year in two thousand and twenty three. Um, there's six focus areas in the long range plan as depicted here. It's also on handout to directly support any of the four twenty year vision networks that we review with you for growth and expansion to our fixed route system as part of this presentation. I'd like to focus on the three that are most within our control, and those we call the three Bs. It's namely buses, basic level mechanics. All are critical components of any proposed expansion, as you likely know. Of course, additional capital facilities if we were to grow, including additional sound transit service, whether that's articulated coaches or double deckers that they'd like to introduce within the next few years. And recruiting and retaining employees certainly is important, as I mentioned. And most importantly is none of this is possible without additional funding. And we're assuring that that is clearly called out in both our initial outreach and engagement efforts as part of this long range plan, as well as on the document. It's going to be presented as what we call officially, fiscally constrained vision, and that's actually an oxymoron. What we mean by that is that the long range plan will include cost assumptions for all phases or aspects of many proposed future growth scenarios. Right. The long range plan will also look at emerging technologies. It seems that things are that are only on the horizon. Even four years ago, when we completed our Destination two thousand and forty update, such as using your mobile handset to check real time bus arrival information or pay your fare was very futuristic. And then all of a sudden, it's reality. So we also understand that autonomous micro mini shuttles, something once considered futuristic too, will soon be in operation in places such as the Jacksonville Transit Authority and contract, and autonomous minibus is running around town anytime soon. But there's places like Point Defiance Park where we've been asked about providing shuttles from their parking lot up to the aquarium and zoo attractions. And this type of system, we think is ideal, especially a loop that follows our guides, pucks throughout the park, places frankly where forty foot bus just doesn't work in context. So, um, you know, again, things that we think are so futuristic are happening so much faster. We want to make sure that we're looking at best practices nationwide and addressing what we know today and what we envision for the future as well tomorrow. Continuing on that theme of outreach, we also met with all of our jurisdictional planning partners to find out if our future vision for transit throughout Pierce County closely aligns with their comprehensive plan updates. Specifically, are the routes we have selected for improved service expansion or even all new to the network? This work also involves identifying high priority equity populations and where they live today, using what's known as the Transit Propensity Index. This is a snapshot of the outreach that we've done to date, and there's certainly more on the horizon, especially these, these one on ones to all of our city councils throughout the, the service area, as well as Pierce County Council that we're meeting with tomorrow afternoon. In fact, the first phase of the outreach effort was an online survey that we, a mapping tool called Social Pinpoint that we used throughout the month of July. We received over seven hundred responses. By comparison, when we conducted this exact same exercise using the same method back in two thousand and twenty as part of our Destination two thousand and forty update process, we only received a hundred invited here. Again, very similar to what we heard last year, at the end of the year, when we completed our Bus System Recovery Restoration Plan. We find that our passengers are much more likely to ride midday. Our average trip is about four and a half miles. We don't have an A M P M feeder service to, to sound transit in places beyond, unlike some of our peer agencies. So really, we're still learning that the people that utilize our system, for many, that is their only form of personal transport. So we're trying to keep that in mind as we continue to, to plan for the future, both in the short term and in the long term. Talked a little bit about project coordination before. We actually met with all of our jurisdictional planning partners one on one in August. And we had a Lakewood, a Stillicum specific meeting that included Tiffany Spear and Jeff Remick. And they provided some really good information again about how our plan will hopefully and likely complement your comp plan update. And again, making sure that the areas that we, where we see growth and development and the need for greater transit are exactly where you all see growth and development. And it was a really good meeting. I really appreciated their input and we spent two hours with them and learned a lot. So talking a little bit about the service expansion scenarios, this is kind of what I call the wow factor. I think it's the most exciting and interesting element of the twenty, Destination two thousand and forty five Long Range Plan. And these are four growth and expansion scenarios we're showing. We showed it our four open houses for the first time, two weeks ago, approximately twenty percent more, which is our scenario A. Thirty percent more is our scenario B. Scenario C is fifty percent more, and that was one that we focused on in our twenty forty update in the year twenty twenty. And it was really a show up and go system. It's about one and a half times the service that we're offering today. And even eighty percent is scenario D, and that's our Pierce County wide vision that we will show as well this time. And when I say from baseline, that's five hundred thousand hours, service hours are how all transit agencies do their budgets. We're not at five hundred thousand. We're certainly trying to get back to it in that we hope to have completed by the September twenty twenty six service change, and that's really our pre COVID service level.
So just a quick question on any of the scenarios A, B, C, or D. Are those all dependent upon a potential ballot measure to get to the full point nine?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can't promote that, but certainly what I can say is additional funding. And the nice thing is, is it doesn't have to be all or nothing. We wouldn't have to go from six tenths to nine tenths. We could do gradual, even with one penny more. So as you probably know, our friends and neighbors to the south and inner city collect one point two. And they have so much cash that I understand they've gone fair free and they've also stopped all advertising. Good friend of mine is their planning manager and he's poaching our employees right and left because they can also pay more. So it's, it's amazing how much more you can do with very, very little funding. So yes, to answer your question, and we will certainly show cost assumptions throughout the plan, what we could do with even just a penny or two more. So thanks for bringing that up. Um, as I mentioned, we won't reach, reach or get back to that five hundred thousand hour service target until September twenty twenty six, and that is the final phase of the Bus System Recovery Restoration Plan. Also want to let you know, in lieu of showing these different scenarios, because I'd be here probably for another hour at least. We're asking you all to, to go to pierstransit.org long range plans, and that is on the sheet that I gave you. We have an interactive self guided open house and our consultant team explains the different scenarios. And there's actually a, a map sliding tool where you can see before and after and why we've chosen these different routes. So I would ask you to spend a little time on it. It takes about ten or fifteen minutes, and I think it's well worth it. And in that way, I don't have to go through the different scenarios here with you all tonight, because again, it would take a bit of time. Although I will say that within scenario, scenario C and D, we offer a new route fifty one from the Lakewood Transit Center North to Tacoma General Hospital, like on Union Avenue again. We've been asked for that route over and over again, even though it didn't perform for us before. Also a new route two forty from the town center to downtown Ording. So again, that's one of the routes that would connect areas that left the, the service area back in the, in two thousand and twelve. Our scenario C would provide a second stream B R T corridor, and for now, we're showing the current route two, uh, which, as you know, goes down Bridgeport Way West from South Nineteenth Street through Furcrest University Place and ultimately here. Scenario D adds a third and final screen B R T quarter, which we're showing as the Stream B R T System Expansion Study as early as next year to determine the routing and term night for both additional B R T corridors, which would complete the network. But fortunately for the city of Lakewood, you're, you're win win because you would get one of the two, the next two. So whether it is this current two or three, and there's really no surprise when we completed that study last year, is that our one, two, three routes coincidentally are top performers year after year. And they're all, we feel really good candidates for bus rapid transit. Um, what this slide shows is something else that we, we shared with Tiffany and Jeff, and there's an additional something new, a network that we want to introduce. We actually poached the idea from King County Metro. And it's called fast, frequent and reliable. And what those routes are, is we're going to be looking at our, our seven, our additional seven. So basically our top ten and those additional seven for quicker implementation, lower cost waste to make it much more travel time competitive with an automobile. That's as simple as transit signal prioritization and at key intersections, also possibly adding some of the things that we've already are doing for the enhanced bus route on Pack Avenue South, S R seven, and that is real time arrival information at stations. So, so it might not be a full B R T station, but I would call it kind of a hype, like a hyper shelter where somebody could pay their, their fare offline. We're also would be introducing push to talk information, real time arrival information. And additional passenger amenities that just kind of, kind of, you know, bring, bring it up a little bit, a little, little greater customer experience. But again, we'll be looking at these routes to decide whether we, we wanted to do an additional route and overlay type of service like we're doing now for under the enhanced bus or just upgrade the entire route. So something that we could do for, you know, a few million dollars versus ten to thirty million per mile for a bus rapid transit. A lot of transit agencies nationwide are looking at this because buses rapid transit, it is so costly and time consuming. But we think that there's a way to make these routes perform. And again, it really comes down to speed and reliability and making sure that it is more travel time competitive with a private automobile. So we, we're excited about that concept too, that we'll be introducing as part of this plan. As I mentioned, on the the story map site, which is on our website, I will throw out some hypothetical questions for you to maybe ponder as you do look at that. And again, we really want to make sure that, that what you, what we see for the city of Lakewood, our vision for transit is your vision too. And all, and in the places where we're reflecting, increasing a route or adding a route, expanding a route, are those the areas where you see growth and development? And I was pretty, pretty happy to hear from both Tiffany and Jeff that we think we're on the right track. Certainly, you know, your city is a little bit easier because you've been doing a lot of this long range planning work, especially filling in this area with higher intensity, higher density. Yeah, I think that it's, it's, it's a perfect storm and it's the nice thing about being, I think, being, you know, having our, our base here and being real regular partners with you all. I think we hopefully know and are in agreement with, with where, where you feel growth and development, development will be coming as transit supportive. But yeah, but again, as if, as you look through this, I would ask you to ponder these questions if you do go on the website and take a look. Uh, the schedule is also on the back of your timeline and milestones is also on the flip side of the handout I gave you. We wanted to emphasize where we are in the process today, and that's the second phase of our robust public involvement and engagement and outreach effort. Outreach efforts and then going into the, these presentations to each of the thirteen cities and towns that we serve as well as Pierce County. So there's still a lot of work to be done. The good news is, is we will have a first draft plan that'll be released roughly the end of November, beginning of December. So if you have nothing to do over the Christmas holiday, we would ask you to take a look at it. But all kidding aside, we'll have to go into a forty five day comment, review period, review and comment period. And then take it to our board and then really clean it up, you know, and take comments from everybody and then provide a second draft. And that second draft will be available for thirty days. So our, our goal is to have this completed and formally adopted by our board in their, at their April two thousand and twenty five meeting, regular meeting. So there will be plenty of time to review the plan and to make comments accordingly. And finally, kind of next steps on the process. I talked about community events. Certainly that was on the one slide we we were about wrapping those up because, you know, going into the fall and the, the weather where we're not as outside as much. Social media is big for us. So we're still using that quite a bit to promote. I mentioned the R G I S story map that's up now. And then we also do take subscriptions to Gov Delivery. So if somebody does go on our website, they can put their email address in and get regular updates as, as we release the plan in, in the different, the different iterations from draft to final. And finally, I should point out too, that the storyboards that I mentioned with the different scenarios are available online as well for you to take a look at. So with that, I can open it up for questions. I know I talk fast, but we certainly appreciate your interest in your allowing us to come present to you.
We certainly appreciate the cooperation as a member of the Pierce Transit Commission. It was important to all of the representatives that this kind of collaboration and cooperation occur for long range planning purposes so that we didn't get out ahead of Pierce Transit or vice versa on at least the transportation related pieces of the puzzle. So we thank you for your, your time. Questions? For members of the council? Is it?
Sure, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious as to your public plan. Are you getting a lot of response back from the members of that community?
Yes, I mean, I think if you go to them.
You, you really have to go to them. We, we, we found that the online presence was not the one on one online because we actually had a virtual open house and it was really poorly attended. And we also did one of our open houses at our base because we're always figure, well, you can go right across the street and you can get a bus and we, all of our employees can show up. And we found that the answer is you have to go where there's something else, whether there's a farmer's market of, of, you know, a, an attract or a restaurant. Our first open house was actually the coffee shop downtown Tacoma on a Saturday morning. There's constantly people coming and going. And we kind of would grab them as they come in. Hey, you want to talk about Pierce Transit and Long Range Plan? So to answer your question, we're certainly learning. But you, you can't make us the destination that we've done it a couple of times, and that's been a big mistake. So, but yes, we did, we'll, we'll talk to anybody and everybody, and I can show you the list. I could even share with you. I think we're up to forty five presentations already, including the Black Collective and some of the people that we've tried to get in front of for years, me central, that we've never been able to talk to before. So we're not to pat ourselves on the back, but we're certainly anybody and anybody and everybody that'll take a presentation, whether it's five minutes or your half hour, we'll go to them. So.
Have you just found a way to get the information to the people that are trying to find the bus stops and how do they? Because a lot of complaints that I get are that they don't know where to go to get a bus if they don't live on a route.
Okay. Yeah, usually for that, they can certainly go through customer service or we, we can talk to anybody. We have travel trainers too that actually are teach people how to ride the bus if they're new in town or they don't know where the routes are, how often things come by. So contacting even myself, I'd be happy to leave my information. I can put them in touch with somebody. But it's, it's really an education piece, and you're absolutely right. A lot of, if we find people are new in town or maybe English isn't their, their main language, and it can be a struggle.
Right. A lot of people don't have access to the internet.
Yes, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up because we learned that too. Don't assume that everybody is internet savvy or can even afford a, a PC or has an internet access. So that's, that's a great point, especially with a lot of the lower income riders that we have. That's why we're making sure that we go, we're at all the fairs and festivals.
Great.
So, and that does not necessarily just for the long range plan, but we have a Pierce Transit booth. So we're trying to get out in the community. I think, I think with the end of the year, we will shatter our goal for community outreach, not just because of the plan, but just in general. We have a whole new team that we never had before across the street that does that full time. We used to farm it out, you know, we used to hire it out. So.
Thank you.
No, my pleasure. Great question.
Just in light with that, the new shelters that we're building have the solar powered, certainly lighting. I think they also offer some sort of scheduling tool there on the shelters.
I believe so. I think they're wired for real time arrival information. They're pre wired. Haven't seen any of those yet. I've seen the shelter with the, with the because that was paid for through a federal earmark that we got through former mayor Strickland, as you know, is now our Congress, uh, U S House member.
I think we're trying to do some of that interactivity to make it easier for people to find out arrival and departure information at the bus stops.
Yeah. But it is a struggle, especially with somebody that's new in town or is not, not familiar with their system. I understand it's, you know, we're always trying to make it as available as possible, but it's not easy if you're new and don't know who to ask, frankly.
Any other themes that emerged from all your talks with the greatest jurisdictions and their comp plan work and lots of conversations about housing density and transit?
Yes, we're certainly looking at, at all of those. You know, the missing middle, home in Tacoma and those types of things, any, anything and everything that's, that's in the legislature. So those will be spoken to specifically in the long range plan. Um, you know, it's a little, I, we have a bit of trepidation because we, we're just, as you know, you know, we operate on a shoestring. And one of the things that Mike Griffiths, our CEO, always ends his talks with is we're doing the best we can based on our, our current funding, which is so minimal compared to our peers statewide, especially in Western Washington for our size, you know, being the second largest county and the third largest transit system after King County Metro and Spokane. So really funding is an issue and it's, you know, we're kind of, we're, we're real hand tied behind our back because we can't ask for it, but we, it's, it's the great big, you know, the elephant in the room, the known unknown, so to speak. So I think, well, as long as we make it very clear throughout this plan, that if you want this much more transit, this is what it's going to cost you. If you want this much more, it'll cost you this much more. So we're going to show a stepped, stepped increase across the board and keep highlighting that it's based on additional funding. But that's really the, our, our biggest concern is because the county is growing as, you know, what is it, twelve thousand per year in the projections that were adopted by the Peachtree County Regional Council and the county from now till two thousand and forty four? I mean, I see it myself, just, you know, just tooling around town. They're coming faster. I think places and I'm guilty, you know, like obviously on the car like everybody else, but places, corridors that were never congested before. It seems like it's everywhere. So I, I think people are coming faster and I think we, we've got to do a, a better job really trying to keep up, and that's our goal. It's our dream. So we, we're not giving up. That's, that's for certain. And again, we can do a little bit more with just a little bit more funding. So.
Absolutely. Anything else, folks? Otherwise, thank you very much.
It was my pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Send our appreciation back to Mr. Griffiths and again, we appreciate you coming.
Thanks again. Likewise.
Okay, so next, we'll have our twenty five, twenty six federal, state and Pierce County Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual Update based on our prior study session conversation. And for this, we'll have Mr. Vargas, Assistant to the City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council Member, members. Michael Vargas here to review the updates to your legislative policy materials. So I'll be covering, I'll be sticking to the cover memo on page sixteen of your packet tonight. So the following changes in the legislative documents before you tonight came from your September thirtieth legislative retreat. Staff input that was approved by the city council at that time have been implemented in the documents. So any red line changes that you see are your council input that you provided at the retreat. So for your federal policy agenda, under two thousand and twenty five policy opportunities, added some clarifying language about the two thousand and twenty five O L D C C Planning Grant for a Defense Community Corridor Study. One of S S M C P's projects and clarifying language is that this includes all state and local transportation networks that lead to J B L M in Pierce and Thurston County. Just clarifying that item there. Under your state policy agenda, there was input on the clean building standards compliance item that we should prioritize the various requests. So we went ahead and did that with the first request being that we have ongoing state funding for any building compliance. The second priority would be request refinement to the state policy to allow consideration of the public costs versus the benefit of investing in those resources for compliance. And then the last op, the last option would be to extend the timeline for compliance to improve access to capital resources for organizations that would have to comply. And on your clean building one pager, the same changes have been made. Under your state policy manual, there have been two changes. That would be under the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, went ahead and removed that sort of laundry list of their entire agenda and simply concluded the city support shapes two thousand and twenty five legislative agenda to include the following items, such as affordable housing subsidies, facilitating housing supply and opposing preemption of local land use authority. And again, the clean building item was aligned as well. So the most changes this time around were actually concentrated in the Pierce County Policy Manual. For example, start off again, shapes item has been aligned with the state item.
Let us get there real quick.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be on page sixty three of your packet.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Okay. The next item would be Lakewood Libraries. Some pretty substantial changes here. That's page seventy of your packet. The first paragraph briefly describes the history between city and Pierce County Library Systems with the second paragraph summarizing the updates in the past couple of years in relation to the interim in main library updates. A couple of sub items were added. The first one, the Lakewood Library Analysis Item describes the analysis that shows that Lakewood as a city government creating its own library would be financially infeasible and undesirable to a regional library system. So we went ahead and completed that analysis in a two thousand and twenty two. And also the next item would be the interim public park, which describes the city's interest for P C L S to create an interim public park at the old main library site with a focus on green space and sports facilities for the youth and senior in, in our community. Next item that was changed would be under the Pierce County Sewer Utility that starts on page seventy six, leading to page seventy seven. And in this item, short and sweet, we added a reference to Arrowhead and Partridge Glen, that the city should look at that, I mean, that the county should look at that sort of urbanized county jurisdiction area when they are updating their unified sewer plan. Next item would be the Chambers Creek Canyon Policy Item that starts on page seventy seven again into seventy eight. We added some language to add some city positions on conservancy and salmon activity. The city supports conservation of the Kansas Natural State in alignment with the city shoreline management program. The city supports increasing the salmon population and this could be addressed through addressing the dam either through partial or complete removal, but that's after the county completes any prioritized long term capital improvement projects in the area. Next change would be removing the Lakewood Community Center Items. We don't have a direct request of the county on that. And then the last couple of changes would be on the last couple of pages there. Under Innovative Service Solutions, we removed old references to county ARPA funds for sewer extensions in the Stillicum Neighborhood and added a reference to expanding video hearing at the Pierce County Jail for our municipal court. And again, the clean building item was updated to align with, with the changes we covered. And with that, that concludes the presentation of the changes. Welcome. Any question or comments from the council?
Any questions? I, I had a question just based upon the last presentation we had, whether or not it might make sense under the county policy manual to add some paragraph about continued coordination, collaboration, cooperation with Pierce Transit to ensure that transportation solutions are consistent with Lakewood's comprehensive plan and its growth projections or something like that. Because there will be a need for us to to collaborate and partner as. To collaborate and partner as they facilitate the BRT projects because we are slated to be the next one.
Yep.
Uh, and I think that that would be helpful to have a statement of support.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, that'd be a good fit under the Innovative Service Solutions since that's focused on partnerships with outside agencies. So. Think a sentence or two there for support um and collaboration with that. That could be added.
Yeah, I think, are you okay with that, members? I think it's good to have that in there.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, you can throw a little paragraph in there for us to look at before we consider it next week. That'd be good.
Yeah.
What, Mr. Vog? Oh, well, maybe not, but it's 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 a good uh policy uh statement for sure. All right, anything else? I think you made it in record time. That was like.
I know, sure, it's a sweet uh presentation, yeah.
Like an attorney, you had a six minute increment or something. You had it right under.
Yep.
Very good. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
So we'll bring that back with the minor change probably next week for consideration on the consent agenda.
Correct. This item is going before the council for review and consideration at your November 4th regular meeting.
Regular meeting, correct. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next. We have review of the multifamily tax exemption program and the residential target area. And I believe we have Ms. Newton, our Economic Development Manager, with us tonight for this overview. Mr. Remack is not here tonight. You're good to go.
Mr. Remack is not here this evening. He may pop in, but it's just me for now.
Very good.
So thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Members of Council. So this evening, um, as mentioned, we are reviewing the multifamily tax exemption program. Uh, with the potential uh for expansion of residential target areas that allow for the exemption. So we'll uh briefly review items that are in the memo and then go through uh the PowerPoint. Uh, which is up there now and then address council questions, including uh the. Note that was sent by a council member, Branstead, earlier. We have some comments on that as well. I just wanted to note that we had planned to go to Planning Commission beginning in September, but that was postponed. To live, to allow for council to review more important or pressing things such as budget and so forth. So disregard that September 4th date that's on the memo. Okay, so beginning on page 81, uh, the MFTE program was updated to me this this evening. Is really to for council to consider where to provide these incentives elsewhere in the city. There's also a proposed code amendment I'd like to review with you this evening. As you know, the MFTE is a significant housing economic development incentive. That's put in place to support a variety of new and rehabilitated housing projects throughout Lakewood for rent and owner occupied. It's not a rezoning, so I just want to um emphasize that the underlying zoning is already in set, so they're already been set, so there's no changes to zoning. It's just an incentive to mil- to build um multifamily housing in the Lakewood area. Um, it's the MFTE, um, not only incentivizes developers to build sooner. But also to choose Lakewood over other areas, um, other peers who also. Uh, potentially offer the MFTE program. So we do want them to build here in Lakewood. Once council determines which items you wish to consider, Planning Commission will then review to include a public hearing and comment. So they'll go through a public process before it comes back to City Council for review. Uh, also areas we have now, um, just to to let you know, incentivize projects. That we may not get the housing for in the Lakewood area. So that's why we have the residential target areas that we have tonight specifically. As to which areas you want us to bring back to the Planning Commission for consideration as part of the public process. Um, okay, so on page 82, um, it shows if you had a chance to take a look at the intent. Of uh the residential target areas. It's a limited eight or 12 year exemption. It encourages additional housing of all types. Um, achieving development densities that we wish to see here in Lakewood that are more conducive to transit use. Within areas of the city designated by City Council as the RTAs or residential target areas. Also to promote investment, economic investment and recovery and to create family wage jobs. And to stimulate new construction or rebuild buildings for multifamily, family housing in those areas. Uh, the designation standards are also listed. Um, public, following a public hearing, the council may. In its sole discretion designate residence residential target areas within the city of Lakewood. Uh, the target area must lack sufficient available desire desirable and convenient residential housing to meet the needs of the residents. It must provide additional housing opportunities in the target area that will assist in achieving um encouraged increased residential opportunities. Or stimulate construction of new multifamily housing and rehabilitation of existing vacant and under designated in RTA. The city council may also consider. Other factors um which are listed there as well. So um. The areas that are allowed for the residential target areas are the Central Business District, Multifamily 1 and 2. And 3, the Arterial Residential Commercial, NC 1 and NC 2. On page 85, you'll see some city comparisons showing um. You know, which cities have really contributed most to M MFTE. Um. And of the cities, Seattle by far is is ahead of the pack. Um, but we are anticipating that Lakewood will increase our housing uh due to the significant targets that we have, particularly for. So we work to attract uh quality developers to come here in Lakewood and to stay here and to build quality products. Uh, it's good to incentivize those that also continue to develop in quality projects in Lakewood. Um, also on page um on, within your packet, um, we wanted to emphasize that we support the military. And we're mindful that um there is a need for off base housing. There's quite a significant weight. For military service members and their families for on base housing, off base housing, and particularly to support the lower level. Um, entry levels from E1 to E6 in particular. So on page 886, um, there is a few other notes on that. Uh, we recently approved or under construction 500 units of housing. We have 600 units or that are 100 units that are going through the permitting process and we anticipate another 650. Um, in pre-application or discussions with the city. Uh, MFTE is for the developers to develop and that's why it's it's a very key economic development tool to enhance. The projects that come here to Lakewood.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
So of the 500 housing units that have been approved for construction.
Yes.
The 600 that are under review and the other stuff, the benefit of the MFTE.
So let's see, under construction, let's see.
That kind of, that kind of tells me whether the market needs the incentive or doesn't.
Absolutely. So I'm trying to think of all the projects we have. So we have Bristol Apartments, which is a smaller project. I don't have quite the list, but um, let's see if I have that. And so we have um another project that was just approved, which you approved the resolution for in the Kendrick Street. 44 units, correct. And then um, there are several, most of the other projects are being built currently without the MFT.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Alliance project, do they plan to avail themselves of the MFT, if you're aware of that?
Alliance will be applying for the MFT.
And that's already within the RTA for the CBD right now.
That's correct, yes.
And how about the um Devco project? That's already in the C, the MFT area?
Devco project is in the Lakewood Station District, 245 units. Uh, they decided not to apply for the MFT. They were building permits. They wanted to get building permits issued. Um, quickly to um stay in time for when they want the project to be built. And they also already have uh grants, uh subsidies to um support their project. Yeah, they kind of applied late in the process. Application. We do have two other projects in the Station District um that are proposing MFT.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so just a color, couple other comments. Um, while the MFTE exempts owner taxes during that period. It's really a temporary deferral. Again, the incentive helps to build new projects and or rehabilitate proper project unity and attract new residents. It also created good jobs or creates good jobs through construction. It's a significant housing and job um targets um. Um, that we have that are identified on page 86 that we're trying to strive for. Um, the, I wanted to mention that uh within the downtown, um, or all of the downtown, of course, is a regional center for growth. And that is key um for both employment and to hit a resident center. Uh, the regional center status makes it possible for us to qualify for significant transportation dollars. And we must get to those targets um on a consistent basis over time to maintain the center. Uh, we do have listed some community feedback. Um, I'm happy to go through those with you if you have. Yes, okay. Okay, so we both have um just overview um pros for that, for the um. MFTE, it provides more housing, both lower and mid range, helps to stimulate redevelopment and growth and follows the city's plans. New housing generates property tax dollars, creates, motivates reinvestment in the city and expansion is crucial for continued growth. And the success of Lakewood. Um, again, these are comments that we received through the previous uh public process. It's imperative to have sufficient housing options and proximity to commercial drives foot traffic. And helps businesses to thrive and promotes revitalization. Uh, the cons um mentioned were concern about traffic and congestion along Gravel Lake Drive. Concern about tree removal, noise pollution and security and crime. Several neighboring residents felt their shit of neighbors concerned that higher density would compromise the quality of life and possibly push traffic onto side streets. Some residents don't want developers to receive incentives. Uh, that's their personal opinion. Uh, there's concern about safety and proximity to the Clover Park School or High School. There's a belief that more density may take away from the community. Um, asked us to consider residential target area expansion along uh Bridge, Bridgeport Way rather than what we had proposed. Uh, several residents were concerned about the effect to the Salmon Baring Creek and Wildlife. And also mentioned um was concerned about water quality runoff erosion and human activity in general. So, and then also to add on uh to your question, Mayor, there have been several project. Projects that have been proposed but have not moved forward because of the MFT. It was not present.
Interject just in your role as the development manager, you know, what do you hear on the street with regard to folks coming for pre-application meetings? What are you hearing about development activity needing or desiring to have the incentive of an MFT versus not? And then my follow up question, can we incentivize the development of something other than housing like small businesses, commercial office space and the like? My, I'll let you respond, but the anecdotal sort of responses, that isn't a tool that we have in the toolbox that I'm aware of.
Correct. Um, yes, it is a tool, a significant tool that we have available. It's currently a significant need for housing, as you know. Both affordable but also as an economic development tool, um, because we have a lack of housing just generally across the nation. And uh, most of the developers that we talked to are either not going to do a project or hesitant to do a project. Because they need that MFT to offset some of the costs to make it uh profitable for them to actually do the development. Um, in terms of offering um incentives to businesses, uh, we really can't give out grant, as you know, uh, gifting of public funds. We really can't do those types of things. Uh, there is a retraction of office in general in the market just because of live work. Um, if you go into downtown Tacoma or other areas like Seattle, you see lots of vacant office space. And so, and some of that is being considered for redevelopment to housing. And so housing is a big deal. Um, and so we're hearing that there's uh also a shift to seeing different types of housing such as townhomes. Um, some higher quality, you know, as as people are retiring, um, there's a need for senior housing like age restricted housing, uh, 55 and over. Um, what else? Um, so housing is is really a key. And like I said, most, most developers are really um incentivized by having that MFT in place in order to move those projects forward. And we are seeing some of those other developers such as Devco. Um, Devco projects, which is 245 units, 60% AMI, which we've talked about previously. They did receive um state funds, so that helps to um make the project work. Um, and then they they could have, like I mentioned, they could have applied for the MFT, but um it was more more important to get the project moving. To to fulfill the need for that housing. Um, and so we really don't have, that I'm aware of, a significant tool such as the MFT. To incentivize developers in the areas where we want the growth to occur, particularly in residential, uh, different types of housing.
From your perspective, knowing what we went through to do the sub area planning process for the Central Business District. Is there some value at least having design standards in place to offer an MFT. Within the Central Business District where we have some more control over the design standards as opposed to outside the CBD?
I think, well, my my personal opinion is through the sub area process, like for the downtown, there was. Uh, consideration for design. So the formings are set up, like for example, we have the Colonial Center overlay, so some. Some uh treatment that makes it feel like you're in the Colonial Center area and different overlays. Um, so I think that um through the sub area planning processes, that's the place to really to do that. If you were to impose significant.
I wasn't suggestively imposing, I was, I was asking whether or not standards, because they've already been established in the sub areas.
If you want to control the design standards, that you would have to revise the code um to to do that. And it. All of the 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 projects that I've seen come through MFT. Uh, and the housing projects that are coming on board are incorporating. Uh, such as the new development on Lakewood Drive, incur incorporating higher standards. Um, for the, you know, higher, um, better appliances, um, countertops, um, treatments, you know, the fixtures and so forth. That just because that's what's being demanded by the market. Um, you could do that and depending on how restrictive it is, um, of what you're doing, it may may have some, you know, inhibition on. What the developer does.
Mr. Person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so can can you? Take us through the the process of, you know, it, a project comes in, they request the MFT. My understanding is it's not like that they just get an approval, right? It doesn't have to come through council and and we have some, you know, sort of. We can tell them no if we don't like what they propose, isn't, is that?
So generally, um, so when a project comes in, it's timing, it's about timing too. So a SEPA site development all has to be completed first. Uh, uh, require that the design review be completed as well, so that we know what the project's going to look like. And then all of that's done before they apply for the multifamily tax exemption. And uh, once they apply for the um, the multifamily tax exemption. Review, re-review this to make sure obviously that it complies with code it has to and also confer with building. To make sure that they don't have any issues. Um, that multifamily tax exemption is is approved. Based on it meeting the code and uh comp plan, all of our our codes and requirements for the city. And so we also do, uh, me personally and our team looks at. Does, it's not required in the code right now, but we do look at whether or not they. Um, including, you know, upgraded amenities, um, particular, like for example, the one that I had presented. Last for the resolution, uh, connection pedestrian connections and pathways. But as long as they um. Abide by the code, then it is then approved as eligible by the director. And then it is required by, um, we then send the agreement to the um applicant or the owner, property owner. Um, they review it and then sign the agreement. Then we take all of that to City Council for resolution. Um, City Council passes or passes a resolution based on them meeting the code requirements. And then uh we issue a conditional certificate uh agreement also. And then um they have three years in which to finalize the project, completely build it, get certificate of occupancy. Then we go in to the project and review it, make sure that they've done everything as they said they would. And then they can request a final certificate of exemption. And then if everything is in line, then we approve it and then it goes to the county.
Thank you. So so after they get done with SEPA, if they have to do SEPA. Um, then they can apply, uh, once they've done SEPA and what was the other items?
Uh, we have to have SEPA and site development approved.
Okay.
I also require that design is approved, so we know what that design is now. Um, if a client comes back and makes some minor adjustments, but it doesn't really affect the project. Um, then, and it isn't in the agreement, if it's in the agreement, they have to abide by whatever's in that agreement. So they could make some slight adjustments to design, um, but the MFT. Has to be approved before the building permits are approved.
But the building permits, the site development permits, all that's basically at approval status, waiting to get the the MFT approval.
Yeah, we can't issue building without the MFT.
It'd be, it'd be nice to to be able to not have us as the very end to be able to provide some real time input on something. to be able to provide some real-time input on something, rather than everything's been designed, you know, now it's waiting to get permits and now we have a comment. You know, it'd be nice if there was another way to at least have us look at something upfront, if we had some certain opinions about, you know, the project as a whole or whatever. Just food for thought on that, I guess.
I think we made some adjustments in the last couple of years. We used to be a little bit more discretionary with council, but it took developers more time to kind of ping pong back and forth to staff, and then the entire project would come back to us with kind of a yea or nay on the MFTE approval, assuming the project met code and obviously your design had been reviewed by staff. The zoning was appropriate, obviously, and it met all the other criteria for the MFTE by code. I think, I think that was the change a few years ago.
Correct. The council, it did come to council in a study session review. That was, as you mentioned, after, you know, we had done site development and basic design review and gave, council had an opportunity to comment on the design. So, that presented a hiccup, if you will, for the developers in that they didn't have any predictability, whether or not council would necessarily like the project or not like the project. And so, the administrative approval process is more streamlined for the developer and creates a sense of security for them as they're putting a lot of risk out there in developing the projects here in Lakewood. So, that was kind of the reason to switch to more of an administrative eligibility approval. Technically, if per MFT or per the RCW, if the developer, you know, aligns with the code and does everything that's required, then we should be approving the MFTE.
Have we ever, as staff, have recommended a denial?
Staff, there was a project on Lake Grove that was denied, sixty units. And I believe if I recall correctly, that was because it was very basic garden style, sixty units, fairly plain. It didn't really have much pizzazz, if you will, and so council did deny that project.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
The project still got built, it just didn't have the benefit of the MFTE, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, what happened there was we had passed the new standards in the downtown plan. And he invested prior. And we said, well, if you want the MFT, you need to build it to the current plan. And he said, no, and he built it anyway.
Current design standards, yeah.
Yeah. My question, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, is, and I'm looking at the recommendations and maybe you're gonna go?
I'm gonna go through those.
Okay, let me just go.
Yep, whenever you're ready. Good, okay, so we'll switch over to the PowerPoint and take a peek at that. Let's see here. Okay, so as we've already kind of looked at this a little bit, and we've talked about the housing units. So, the chart you've seen before through the comprehensive plan and what Ms. Spear has presented to you many times, we have very significant targets for growth within Lakewood.
And just to be clear for the benefit of the audience, those are not targets that we pulled out of a hat. Those were targets that were somewhat dictated to us by the-
Okay.
PSRC and PCRC numbers.
Yes, and it's in line with all of the planning agencies, PC, you know, Pierce County, Puget Sound Regional Council, which is very key, as I mentioned, to the regional growth center. Oh, keyboard? Okay, great. All right, so this slide basically shows the target areas are highlighted in gray. And then, the areas where a residential target area could go are the various colors. And the chart to the left shows the zoning. So, for example, ARC, arterial residential commercial allows for the very minimum fifteen units per acre, maximum height of forty feet. And there's only seven, little over, little under eighteen acres of that type of zoning in Lakewood. And down the list, so the Central Business District allows for the most density at a hundred units per acre, a maximum height of ninety feet and with two hundred and sixty-seven buildable lands. And then, on down the line, the next highest allowable per acre are both the multifamily three at fifty-four units and the transit oriented commercial at fifty-four units. Okay, this next slide just shows, again, the yellow is the residential target areas. The green just kind of highlights where those residential target areas could be. And then, the little pinkish purplish area is the Central Business District proposed expansion that we had proposed previously. Okay. Okay, that's the Central Business District. I'm gonna come back to that one closer to the end. But I wanted to talk a little bit about each of these areas. So, this is the Lakewood Station District. The outline in black is where the residential target area is. And there is a very small sliver, what we would, what we would call maybe some zoning that we wouldn't necessarily recommend. There's just a little strip along Pack Highway that's outside of the residential target area. Across the street on Pack Highway, of course, we have several commercial projects. We have the e-commerce fulfillment center, we have a lumber company, we have all Riley's. We also have Wash Dot Public Works Facility, we have hotels, welchers, and we have Titus Will. So, most of that is all commercial. Also, it's along I-5, which is not the most desirable. We have gone through many iterations of redevelopment on I-5, including a potential to include residential on I-5, and it just kind of fell apart. It never really came to fruition. So, really, we're not recommending any expansion necessarily in the Lakewood Station District. Only available would be that small little strip, but not really an area we would necessarily recommend. Okay, this is the Oak Brook area. And as you can see, there's a lot of multifamily that is fully built out, there's no underutilized. However, the neighborhood commercial area along Stellacom Boulevard has some vacant properties as well as underutilized properties. And our thought there was that there is some older commercial. We don't, we don't want to displace the commercial. However, there could be opportunity for redevelopment to include mixed-use housing, residential and commercial, could do residential above, horizontal. There are some options that you could include a residential target area in that area, if you wish. The next area is what we're calling the Northeast Quadrant. And that basically is along Custer and Bridgeport. So, there's quite a bit of underutilized property, including some vacant properties. We will be doing road improvements all along Custer in 2025. And so, while that may be a good area for residential target area, our recommendation at this time may be to wait until the road improvements have been completed and then see where we're at and line up the redevelopment with the road improvements. The next area is Spring Brook. And that is, as you know, a mix of a lot of different types of zoning. A lot of it is in the flood zone. There's a very small area that allows for multifamily tax exemption. We do have a second project in, already in the residential target area that will be applying for the MFTE, and that's being called Spring Brook Two. There is some underutilized and vacant property also in the neighborhood commercial area just above, which would be looking at the screen, just above where that residential target area currently exists. So, that would be the only potential area that I might consider or we might consider as a recommendation for expansion in that small neighborhood commercial area. And this is Telecom. And so, there is quite a bit of underutilized property along the NC Two on Union. There are some vacant properties also in the MF One and MF Two areas, including a property that's owned by the city of Lakewood. And there is some vacant area which is in and around where the new interchange is to the south of the Telecom area. I'd also just like to mention that, as you know, there is a number of Habitat for Humanity homes that have been built. And the city has been supportive of that. We also think that while multifamily is allowed, and that's great, we think that it may be more conducive to more single-family development. However, you know, multifamily is also obviously allowed in the Telecom area. And then, this is Woodbrook, the two areas that you can see pretty clearly that allow for the MFTE and where those underutilized properties are. And then, I'm going to, I'm not gonna go to the map, but I'm gonna go, you know, the CBD, there was a map of the CBD as well. And I'll just mention or reiterate that, reiterate that the CBD is the regional growth center. And so, that's really the most opportunity for development, for residential. And so, I do have a few comments I'd like to share with you on how we kind of got to our notes and recommendations for consideration. So, in the chart, you'll see the Central Business District, as I mentioned, the highest density for growth. It's a regional growth center, and it is also a comp plan priority. So, the only caution that we heard is there was some folks that came out potentially in opposition, resident concern about having the residential development along Gravel Lake Drive. This is an area that we are still recommending to move forward. And I will, I have several reasons of that, which I'll go through with you in a moment. And then, considerations of the NCT, NC Two and multifamily two expansion along Stellacom and the NC Two. So, let me go back to that real quick, just so I can show you. Oops, too far, CBD. So, when I say the very north, you'll see some NC Two, which is the pink areas. And then, we did have some comments from some folks that, well, why not consider it along Bridgeport in the NC Two area? So, that was another comment that we've heard from others. The Gravel Lake Drive expansion, I think that I will comment now on that just because we're at that point in the discussion. So, and then, in the second comment, I'll just mention, just because we're talking about it, that council member, Branstadter, had a concern about. He said he did have some concerns about the stretch along Gravel Lake Drive in that there, he sees a lot of development, you know, there's banks, there's churches and so forth. If you look, if you take a deep dive into the properties along there, the proposed addition for the Central Business District, RTA, has nine point two five acres of vacant and underutilized property, and that was added due to having the highest potential for development and trying to incentivize and encourage developers to develop along that area. There's a lot of underutilized property in and around the bottom areas, so which we call the Clover Park Shops. And those shops right across the street from Clover Park High School. So, in addition to the nine point two five acres, this does not include the library site. Of course, it's up to the Pierce County Library System Board to decide what they would wish to do. And as Mr. Vargas had mentioned earlier, you know, he had noted that maybe it could be used for an interim park. So, that's a consideration as well in the interim time. So, it also does not include the several older office buildings that exist along Gravel Lake Drive business, but also residential development could be included on the property. As mentioned earlier, there has been a trend to convert office to residential. Lakewood is not necessarily overbuilt with office. However, there is an opportunity to either redevelop or add to the office that we do have, particularly in the Central Business District. And so, and then there's other properties along that stretch. So, for example, the large brick building is owned by an individual who has a construction company. So, you know, they made older building that was built in nineteen sixty-six. And so, there are those types of properties along that area and including, you know, the Pontellion condominiums, those that was built in the sixties. There's just more opportunity beyond the nine point two five acres where there could be some redevelopment or and/or rehabilitation. So, I wanted to mention that for the Central Business District as to why we had recommended that extension. And then, moving down to the Station District, the positive for that would be the high growth. But due to the very limited area and location that's available, we wouldn't necessarily recommend expanding that area. Caution that that's vacant area that could be included in the RTA. Oak Brook, that area is ripe for redevelopment. It does have underutilized in the NC Two. The only caution is potential displacement of commercial, but again, that could be included in a redevelopment. And the Northeast Quadrant, which is Custer and Bridgeport, potentially a vibrant live-work commercial area, and also the twenty twenty-five road improvements I will bring to your attention again. There are some wetlands in the area, and I would caution you as to the potential for commercial displacement, as mentioned. And then, in Spring Brook, small potential for expansion of the NC Two. And the new trail word says walk shed, there's really not adequate walkability, if you will, due to the Bridgeport, and it's a very busy street, so that is just a consideration to think about. Also displacement, there are mobile home parks in that area, and a lot of it is in the flood plain. And then, Telecom, there is a high potential to create a vibrant village in the Telecom area. We really believe that will be the case. We do know that there is a little bit of sewer extension that may be required depending on the intensity of building in the area. The caution would be displacement again. And then, also, there, it is a twenty-three percent poverty area for Lakewood, so low household income. And then, for Woodbrook, there are, is some large underutilized MF Two area that could be developed. Neutral, it is close to the Industrial Business Park in Woodbrook. And the caution items would be also displacement, potential displacement. And that area has a forty percent poverty level, so consideration. And then, finally, I'll go back, failed to go back to my chart. The final slide that I have is our recommendation, coming back full circle, I guess, to the central business tension in that area is because of the highest density, because of our need to maintain the regional center for growth. It allows us to get significant transportation dollars. If we do not keep up with growth that is anticipated over time, then we may lose the regional center, which would not be good. It's a comprehensive plan priority, and it's a downtown subarea, which is our main development focus. As I mentioned, the regional growth center, reiterate that again. Efficient, we do have efficient separation between where the development would be and also abutting residential properties close to shopping services and walkability for safe. I think I will stop and happy to entertain any questions and address other questions that council member Branstadter had. other questions that uh council member Bransdatter had.
Okay, great. Questions, Mr. Pearson and then Mr. Bookie, do you have some questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's a spot on the west side of the Central Busi- Business District that is outside of the it kind of jogs out towards Lake Silicon and it's, there's not multifamily zone there or commercial. What what is going on with that? Commercial corridor?
Okay. Say that again, I'm sorry.
It's wrong. Oh, which map do you need?
It's outside the Central Business District.
It doesn't show up as red. It's this area right here.
If it's not red, it would not.
It's like just this little area that jogs, the little block.
But the border is there.
It's that same block. You're talking right here.
I think it's the same block. Yeah, and not, I didn't see it as multifamily or.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the zoning. Um, but that obviously is in the residential target area. It's just outside of the Central Business District.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And then in this this map, so does this?
It is.
Okay.
It is in a residential target area, correct.
Okay.
So just to be clear, sorry, it is kind of confusing. Um, so we've had uh the residential target area is not exactly in line with the Central Business District or the downtown. So we have some properties that extend up and um to the right on the map uh that actually have multifamily tax exemption uh projects that are current. And that was the ten-year exemption prior to the legislation being changed. And so um it doesn't exactly match. Um, and so however, we're just recommending extending along gravelly.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you for a couple more. Um, so in your, zoomed all in, I can't. So in the Springbrook area, you said displacement, but you didn't list mobile homes, but did you say there was mobile home parks in that area that?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Yes.
And then so that, so Springbrook has mobile homes that are there and then Woodbrook does as well in those two areas?
Yes.
Okay, and and Telecom?
Telecom does.
Um, all right, thank you for that. That clears one of my questions. I'll save comments until after.
Great. Mr. Bookie. So a couple of questions now that you talked about the C B D.
Yeah.
Um, the new, the project that's going in at the corner of Gravelly Lake and Silicon, looks like it's in the target area. Are they receiving the taxes?
That are you, you're talking about, there's a couple of projects. There's Swan Grove and then there's another, the name is.
Another one right at the corner is Silicon Boulevard.
Swan Grove is a big one.
It is a big project. They did not apply for the M F T E.
But it is in the target.
But it is in the target.
Okay, um. Let's go to Telecom. Um, you, I just want to make sure I understand. So it says, consider R T A in N C two northwest of Union and multifamily areas. And so then I go up and it's the brown, it's the brown and tan areas. Is that what you're?
Yes, council member, yes, all of the um colored area would be allowed for R T A. We're um recommending, not recommending, but saying that, you know, it would be reasonable to consider any of the multifamily areas. So that's multifamily one and multifamily two. So it's like the tan and then the brown area. And then the neighborhood commercial, um, not on the freeway side, but on the other side. Does that make sense?
Okay, because the freeway side's really small.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I'm trying to understand the impacts. And, you know, I travel on Silicon Boulevard every day in the oak, in the area that you talked about in the Oak Brook one. This would also, I understand the idea, I I believe I understand the standard. And I see opportunities, right? But I do worry about in in the in the environment that we're in on retail that you know, losing retail and then and then um, and I think we've been hurt by that. And I also am concerned, how housing will always be more subsidized because the state wants housing. And 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 the federal government throw in the multifamily tax exemption. So I'm I'm very concerned about the loss of of commercial space. And so I, well, I I see these opportunities and I go, wow, that would be, this would be a good location for this. I'm also concerned of the continuing loss of retail. And I know I'm swimming upstream because um, everybody wants to order by Amazon, but it's it's the, once it's gone, it's gone. It's and and so I'm I'm wrestling for utilized.
Sure. Yeah. Well, first of all, yeah, underutilized properties. So we have vacant, obviously nothing on it. And then underutilized category one would be those properties whose uh buildings or structures or improvements on the property are greater than zero percent and equal to or less than twenty-five percent. And then the next category we look at is those properties that are, the improved value is greater than twenty-five percent or less than fifty percent of the value of the land. So we base it on the value of the land. And so that way we can kind of see, well, the structures on the property aren't really worth that much, or maybe they're old. Um, and so they could potentially be more ripe for redevelopment. Does that help on that piece?
Yeah.
Okay.
That that helps a lot. Then then I'll, I'll throw in two initial comments and maybe we'll. Just two. One, I wouldn't touch Woodbrook. Um, I don't think the future of Woodbrook is residential. I don't think that's been the the plan of the city of Lakewood since incorporation. I I respect that there's people that live there, but it is, it has never been the plan to incentivize new residential properties in in way of amenities in that community for anybody to live there. And it's not our intention to put amenities in. So I I think it would be, it would be bad planning. I'm willing to consider some sort of Springbrook, but I don't want to incentivize any properties that are in the flood zone or near critical areas. So that would be anything adjoining Clover Creek. Because we already had that when those guys, we did turn one somebody down. Um, they wanted, they wanted the area expanded. Um, they wanted to build in the flood zone and we said no. And I, and I think that we were correct in in doing that. Um. And then I'll throw in the last remark. And and you very eloquently supported the idea of the multifamily tax exemption. I don't think from a classical economics standpoint that the multifamily tax exemption holds. But be that as it may, I voted for some. But I will say, my concern, especially in the C B B, is it's not delivering the product that we wanted. And I'll just, and I'll leave it at that. And I think we'll have some further discussion. We allow it to ninety feet and we're getting the three-story woody walk-ups. And so so it's it's not that we're, it it does, it's not delivering the product that we want. So what are we doing wrong, I guess, would be the next question about the mul- on the multifamily tax exemption. Are are expectations too low? And um, because being a a center, as you spoke to, is very valuable. There aren't a lot of centers. We do have to take a lot and and we seem to have very, very low expectations and we do not ask for much. So they don't do anything we want them to do, um, which is go higher, build mixed use.
Right.
And then we don't ask for any impact fees. So, you know, we don't get any parks impact fees, which I've said before. Um, I think it's a problem. And so I think we need to have a more, a bigger discussion surrounding these rather than just a transactional, hey, we'd like, we did last week, hey, he wants to build. Okay, we'll give it to him. And is it the product we want, right? And I, and I think that the eye-opening is what's going on over here. It's not what we wanted when we built the down, when we produced the downtown plan. That was not our expectation. And we wrote it and we worked hard on it. We're very proud of the plan. And it's so it's hard for me to sit here and say, yeah, it's not working the way we wanted it. And we didn't do, you know, it just didn't work. It's not working the way we wanted it to work. So for council consideration.
Yeah, if I may, I'll weigh in on that too. You know, it was my impression, we completed the significant work on the Central Business District Subarea Plan. Now, we really wanted to incentivize vibrant pedestrian-oriented housing and retail um by requiring a mixed-use component with these projects that could go up ninety feet in the Central Business District, which would give adequate incentive to get an economy of scale with height, uh, you know, during the construction process, but provide for that retail pedestrian-oriented, street-facing retail that we thought would create that vibrant, walkable downtown that we didn't have at the time, right? And so I I'm concerned, you know, as Mr. Bookie indicated, the Alliance project, because there's, you know, we're told, because there's retail in the mall, if you will, or the town center, that that's adequate retail. But I didn't think when we did the plan that that was, you know, a caveat. And so when we talk about incentivizing as best we can, retail or other commercial development could include how uh office as opposed to just retail stores in the mixed-use sort of project. When we talk about incentivizing those kinds of things, we know that we have limited tools, but our planning process that led to the Subarea Plan that I thought required mixed use in the town center, in the Central Business District. And so y- you know, I would want to stick to our guns as best we can. And if we're going to expand the R T A, that any M F T E should be conditioned upon providing what I thought we had in our Subarea Plan, which was a mixed-use component. Because otherwise, then you're just placing the opportunity for small businesses, because those are the perfect locations for people. If it makes economic sense to have a twelve hundred square foot wine bar or bottle shop or sports nutrition store or something, you know, uh, there that serves the residents, you know, in the in the units. We're talking about the Green Street Loop. We got the one point one million dollar grant from the feds to do that planning process to again, to create this pedestrian oriented activity in the Central Business District. And if we don't have retail for folks to enjoy and patronize and we just have housing, then we don't have that vibrant sense of a downtown that we thought we were creating, at least I thought we were trying to create. So I would really be concerned about that. I'd like to get some feedback, maybe the next go-around and to maybe take another look at our Subarea Plan that we passed and say, do we have a mixed-use requirement or don't we? And if we don't, should we? Because I'm not sure that we're, we're certainly not seeing the projects that we should be seeing. And that could be the economy, high interest rates, the lack of adequate tools to incentivize the kind of development that we want. You know, we talked about, for examples, the Proctor District, you know, and the Proctor Station and those wonderful projects they did there. Wouldn't it be great to get one of those here? We see it happening in University Place. I see it happening in my day job in Auburn. Why not us? So we gotta figure, in my opinion, we gotta figure that out. And it may be, Ms. Noon, you may hear from the Development Committee, it may be that uh the transportation impact fee that we do have as part of our Subarea Plan, you know, maybe that's disincentivizing that kind of development. I don't know. I have heard that the parking standards, I had one developer, I think, who's even looking at the place at the southern end of the Central Business District, said, well, I would have thought about doing a mixed-use project, but the city's parking standards have both commercial and housing are too much, too aggressive, too much per thousand feet. And so they're retracting back from a potential mixed-use component and just looking at housing, but they'd like to be incentivized with the R T A and the M F T E. Well, I'd like to see them give the city something in exchange for the M F T E. In other words, let's keep the teeth in mixed-use component that I thought we had in the Central Business District Plan. That's my thought. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I think that we've touched on this in a few times. I I thought that there was multifamily or a
Mixed use.
Mixed use. And I thought that that city staff did confirm that that is in fact a requirement. Um, and that the Alliance project, the only way they got out of it was by having their other development supplement. So I think for the most case, my understanding is that most other normal-sized projects would have to have mixed use.
I think we gotta confirm that the Bristol project did.
As the code requires within the downtown subarea, it does require thirty-five percent mixed use in many areas within the downtown. Alliance um is, okay, so, and it's also by parcel. So like Alliance is on a parcel that includes retail. So like AMC Theater, they're taking out the Barnes and Noble, they're relocating the Barnes and Noble within town center. However, there is still retail. So technically, they are meeting requirement for including retail on that parcel. So um, and uh, so there, that's the reason why that's project. We, we, we are bound by the code. It does require mixed use. So um, there are some, you know, things we can try to change um, in terms of if they were to do a master plan of ten acres or more. However, there still is some mixed use. We just, we can't get around that. It's just, you know, required currently in the code.
Yep, thank you. Um, so my general philosophy on this M F T E is you know, we ultimately do have the decision to say no. And and I would rather have the discussion on a possibility come across our plate than never have the discussion and the opportunity to say yes or no.
I agree.
So, you know, shrinking the areas, i- if we can include some more areas that you know, and be thoughtful with the areas that that we, you know, um, would expand. I think that I'm open to having a discussion and entertaining, you know, an opportunity um, to see if it is a good fit or something that we do like. So um, a- as far as some of the areas, um, you know, the the Lakewood Station, I think that that's just staying the same. I agree with that. Um, the Silicon, um. No, not the, I, the uh Oak Brook area off of Silicon, um, I don't, I don't see that as a particular need there, you know, per se. Um, I think that that area has a lot of multifamily there. It's a little bit aging. There's some commercial there. I I think that I don't know if that area needs any incentives. Um, you know, a couple of good projects could come around through there or, you know, sort of some redevelopment. I just think naturally, I don't think that we need to be providing incentives uh in that area. Doesn't strike me as, you know, as an area of the city that I drive by and I'm like, oh, wow, we really need to do something with this. So um, I would remove that one from consideration personally. Um, the Northeast Quadrant. Um, you know, I kind of like the idea. I could kind of go both ways on this one. I I I like the idea of of kind of seeing what we have once the streets get redone and kind of seeing what what happens there. Um, it'd be nice to maybe incentivize to see if something happens sooner that we like. Um, and again, we can always say no, right? We we don't have to just every single time, you know, one comes across our table, oh, yep, you know, there's the approval. Um, if it's something that makes sense and um that we like, then then we could. Um, the Springbrook, Telecom, Woodbrook areas, I I would be for adding those. I I think that, you know, I I, I agree with with Mr. Bookie's discussion about um so- some of that area back there where it's where it's industrial is not going to be residential, but I I think that there's some mobile home parks and stuff back there. In my opinion, you know, that's not exactly safe housing. So if we can get something that provides a better housing situation for someone in need of affordable housing, um, it's, you know, that would go a long way. I I I think that, um, you know, I don't think that the affordable housing goals of any cities is to keep and maintain as many of mobile home parks as we can. So if there's ways to get people out of mobile homes and into other affordable housing that, you know, meets the energy code and the building codes of today and rather than a thirty, forty-year-old mobile home, you know, I think that that's bringing up their quality of of living. So um, I would be for adding those areas. I um let's see, I think that kind of, and then and then along um the Central Business District along Gravelly Lake drive there. I I think it makes a lot of sense to to match it up with the Central Business District and you know, we we've heard the comments from from lots of folks on on that one last time, a couple of months ago. And some of the, some of the concerns were that, oh, now we're gonna get multifamily. Well, it's already zoned to be commercial or multifamily, so nothing's changing. And quite frankly, if I was living, you know, next to or a couple of parcels down from somewhere that could have commercial or could have multifamily, I think I'd prefer multifamily in most cases, you know, that's certainly better than like a Jiffy Lube or a car wash that's just, you know, causing all kinds of noise and stuff, you know, that that could go up next door, right? So I I think would I rather have, uh, you know, some sort of loud, potentially loud, uh, commercial use there or loud, potentially loud, uh, commercial use there or 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 a, you know, twenty unit apartment complex or something. It's like, well, I'd I'd probably take the take the units. At least people are gone during the day, you know, for the most part. You're, you can, if you work from home, it's pretty quiet. You're not sitting next to, you know, a giant uh wind tunnel at a car wash all day, you know. I mean, that would, that would be really disturbing. So um and for that, for that reason, I I think that, I think it makes sense to to mirror those up uh and include that whole kind of southern southwestern portion of the central business district.
Okay. And again, just to kind of bring us back to what our task is tonight, we are getting consensus on what we're going to direct the planning commission to further review and study and have public process on, correct?
Correct. We would like your um recommendations.
Yeah, just recommendations for further review, study and ultimate recommendations back to us. So this isn't any final decision tonight.
Okay.
Councilmember Bell, did you have some?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, just a couple of things. Um agreeing with both. Um, I I hear both sides on Woodbrook and I I appreciate both both from Councilmember Pearson and Councilmember Boki. But I would lean towards more housing. The the what Council um member Pearson talked about with Woodbrook, Stilicum and Springbrook. I do like that. Um, I think that that's better way to get people. I know that there are not as many amenities over there. But um incentivizing some better housing would be great. I do really like uh the Stilicum Custer area where I know that, yes, want to wait for um construction to happen, but I do like the idea of really looking at that area as what we talked about for. I like the mixed use. It's just is already commercial down there. Retail would be great. I think that could be a really vibrant area. And then um agreeing again with Councilmember Pearson about the central business district area. It is already zoned that way. And I too would prefer that it would be if I, you know, more housing there versus um a Jiffy Lube or that that was your example. So those are my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boki, your deputy mayor, do you have any other further thoughts or comments on that? Let let me uh give some homage to Councilmember Brandstetter's comments. I think we all got a copy of the email, but I told him I would bring it up in his suggestions. So uh, starting from the top, so to speak, the central business district RTA, he had some concerns uh on that. He discussed in his email, he'd support a limited RTA expansion to a portion of that area. So I'm not exactly sure exactly where he's referring to, but I think staff has the gist of his email. I personally would be uh supportive of having the planning commission take a look at fleshing out the RTA opportunity within the entirety of the CBD, including that area. So I'm on board with that. I'm also on board, as is Mr. Brandstetter with the new RTA in the NC and MF zoning areas in Stilicum. Uh, it promotes density in an area that will see an expansion of public transportation infrastructure over time. Proximity to JB Lim enhances the opportunity for service members to have more affordable housing. And increased uh population density in that area would only serve to enhance the opportunity for businesses existing and future in that neighborhood. In Springbrook, Mr. Brandstetter talked about an expansion of the RTA along the NC zone footages along Bridgeport made sense to him. He wanted to restrict portions of the RTA that is the manufactured home park to ensure that there are high density clusters of housing that are naturally occurring affordable housing areas that should be preserved in his opinion. Uh, I am okay. Uh, my personal opinion would be okay to have some limited expansion of the RTA in Springbrook to enhance affordable housing, but I agree with Mr. Boki that it should stay away from the creek and those areas that are floodplain prone. I would be okay, uh, as is Mr. Brandstetter with an expansion of the RTA into NC two spaces in the Oak Brook overlay that we looked at. He believes that that could address the recurring business opening, closing vacancies and some of the sprawl that's been career characterized by properties in that area. Uh, so that might be worthy of of review. And uh he indicates he would not favor expanding the RTA into the northeast quadrant of the city. Uh, I don't know what the consensus was here. I think I would be fine holding off for now to see how the road improvements and the infrastructure moves forth. Uh, no, the northeast.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, after construction. So I think that is the consensus conversation. Is that give you adequate direction or do you need us to give you a further?
Mayor, yes, this I'll overview. Then you're you're in generally in favor uh moving um the following items for consideration to the planning commission. Um, the CBD, all of the CBD to look to look at that.
Right.
Um, uh, Stilicum, yes. Uh, Springbrook, as long as it's not in the flood zone, right, and away from the creek, correct? And then I have uh the N C T two in Oak Brook. I wasn't sure if I had an exact consensus. Um, I heard yes and no.
I I'm not huge on it, but I I think it's okay to
It's okay for review.
At it, review it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And um the northeast quadrant are Custer after the road. Um, construction is completed. Uh, Woodbrook, no, generally. I think most people said no, some. But do you want to put it out there for consideration at this time for planning commission?
I I think Mr. Brandstetter was okay with it.
I'm okay.
At least for the consideration. Mr. Book is a hard no. Where where you saying there, you're talking along Silicon Boulevard there by Oakbrook? Oh, I'm I'm also not happy with expansion of Woodbrook. I think we're talking Oakbrook unless I misspoke. Okay, I'm not a, I'm not a big fan. Wouldn't mention anything about Woodbrook. I can see here.
Okay. And then the final area, Lakewood Station District, I recommend leave it at as is. So.
I think that's correct, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So I believe we've covered all of the areas. Um, I do have um a couple of other comments based on what you've talked about. Um, we had one other item um within the packet, and that is um uh whether or not you would like to uh proceed would affect the central business district district residential target area. So that would allow for the twelve year extension um in all areas in the central business district, except for that, those properties that are within the tax increment finance area. And so
It'd be an extension of four years from eight to twelve.
Twelve years. No extension. So as it is, the CBD, there's no extension allowed. So they'll have their eight year or their twelve, ten year or twelve year, but there's no extension at all. Viewing the M F T E, it was before we did the TIF. And so we weren't sure where the TIF would be. And so we, uh, council had determined not to allow it in the central business district just for the extension again um because of the TIF. Finance program allows the city to bond uh against uh for improvements against future anticipated increases in taxes due to private sector development. So uh staff is recommending that we carve out the TIF and not allow the extension in the TIF area, but allow it outside that in the CBD.
That makes sense. So, Mr. Book.
So it's, I think I found it. Um, extension for projects. So any project in the CBD except for the tax increment finance area, Lakewood Station District and Springbrook residential target areas receiving an eight or twelve year extension may apply for a subsequent twelve year extensions. The idea is you could possibly go out twenty four.
That is already twelve. We don't have any twelve year projects in the CBD. So we have two projects currently in the CBD that are ten year. And if we allowed um for the twelve year, then that would be twenty two years total. But yes, your math is correct. Would be twenty four, potentially twenty four. Um, however, you, they must include at least twenty percent affordable.
Okay, so they have to hit the affordable targets because there is a subsequent in exchange for continued or de increased income restrictions on affordability units. So at least twenty percent affordability. Okay, got it. And that's kind of in line with what Shape has been talking about too.
Oh, Mr. Pearson, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so are are we getting requests to because this is an issue right now or where is this coming from, I guess?
We have had a comment um that they would, that folks would like to see the extension available um in the central business district. Yeah.
And so what is it into a twelve year increment, you know, that we've already done twelve? What does that do exactly at the?
It it extends the property tax exemption off the new um construction for another twelve years. So if it's a twelve year project, another twelve years. If it's an eight year project, then the property owner has to affordable in order to qualify for the twelve year extension.
So we're keeping some units affordable is what that is.
We would.
Otherwise, they they may not be affordable after that time. Is that?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. Yes.
I know. TIF area. It'd be wonderful to have a little graphic with that Venn diagram circle on it at some point. Mr. Book.
It has to be continuous, however, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if there's a break, so we've had at least one or two projects that receive and come back in and ask for it.
Correct.
Okay.
Same applies, must apply for a new project before building permits are issued. Um, and then if someone has an exemption, they must apply for an extension within eighteen months of the termination of the exemption. Yeah.
Mr. Pearson. So, I guess, Mayor. Um, so if we wanted to get more new affordable housing, this goes against that idea of getting more new affordable housing. You're just keeping the same housing affordable. Is that one way to look at it? That we're dragging out these units that we've already, you know, gotten built and and provided affordable housing. We could be getting more new affordable housing in a different way by offering a a different twelve year tax incentive to someone else with getting new units in instead of just incentivizing the same twelve units for twenty four years. We could have twelve other units for twelve years and.
I think it's two separate things. So um we're not limiting other projects. Um, I think that also, this is per personally, I think that providing um additional exemption for developers that are doing quality projects and continuing to build in Lakewood, allowing that engine um uh pr- provides an opportunity for them to develop more projects because they are then saving funds. And then if the project is market rate, um then they are adding affordable units with the twelve year exemption. Does that make sense? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Book, um, I'll speak to this kind of at a high level. This is a concern kind of statewide that there's some of these projects out there that are now reaching the end of their status. And that they'll immediately just all go up to market rate and you'll have people basically who can't afford it and have to leave. Um, I have not seen an actual roster of such projects, but when I'm at this shape meeting, South Sound Housing Affordability Partners that really don't even have uh projects like that, but have had them in the past, right, who are, they're not active in the in that market. But they will say, well, we do have one of these things and we we'd like to be able to extend the thing to keep the twenty percent. You know, and in some cases, you're just not talking about that many units, right? It might be a twenty unit building. And so you know, what, four units or something, right, is all you're talking about. So um I mean, we could ask, I I mean, I should ask um South Sound Housing Affordability Partners to maybe speak to that or somebody to speak to that as to, is this a big problem? Um, is it a, is it a problem here in Lakewood or not? Because again, um, I mean, it's another twenty years into it or twenty two years into it, and they've just been paying property taxes on their, and this is for the whole project. So they're only paying property taxes on the land and everybody else is subsidized. So, I mean, there there is in my mind a policy argument there as to, geez, how long do we're paying, we're all paying more when they pay.
Yeah, we're really supporting low income housing by doing that as a matter of policy.
Right, as a matter of policy. And so is it four units, but then the other, you know, twenty units or sixteen units get the exemption? So I mean, that's, it's not, I don't think it's an easy. Hey, let's just give them twelve more years and, you know, we pay our property taxes. Why can't they, you know, is the project that that bad that that can never pay property tax? So I I think we should extend it, but this is one of those things that housing advocates, low income housing advocates have brought up as a way to try to preserve. Because you're gonna hear a lot more about preservation of of, and that will directly impact Lakewood, right? Because we have a lot more low income housing than most places do, period, in the Fugit Sound area. So when you talk, and we do a good job on preservation, I think, but and but you'll, you're gonna hear more about it, I think.
One thing I I would like to see uh come back is the CBD map, if we can, color coded with the parcels from the subway plan that must have mixed use in them, because I know not all of them have to from your comment. Be nice to get an idea back in front of us. I know we should know off the top of our head, but I don't. Uh, what would be color coded mixed use within the CBD that could have RTA now expanded? That'd be helpful to see. And then maybe the other little line you draw is the TIF area, just so we have, you know, what we're doing there. That would be great.
Okay. So I'm hearing that you're in favor of of continuing that discussion through the planning commission process and back
Sure.
to you. And then um reaching out to others to see what their experience has been with the extension um of affordability and property tax exemption. Right.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
What's a big piece of work? I know um Mr. Estrada from the planning commission is here. We thank you and your members of the planning commission for your work on this. I know we're giving you uh an even more fun work plan now. Yeah, so we'll give you plenty of opportunity for success in the twenty twenty five timeframe. Anything else, Ms. Noon?
I just had a couple of comments um based on the discussion, and I I understand your concern that you're want the mixed use. And I I know that it it's been taken some time to get there. Um, I will tell you that, as you probably know, um, when the developers are building the projects, all of the value is put into the retail. There's no commercial component that has a value added to it just because um retail comes and goes. And it's not necessarily something that they can plan for, right? So it is tough um of these nicer projects that are coming into Lakewood that will also trigger additional projects. So like the Alliance project, it it does have some three story, but it also have the five story buildings um included. So it will uh change. It will definitely be transformational for the downtown. And I believe that will show other developers, you can also do this here. And Lakewood, you know, uh has suffered a bit over time and perception, you know, school district, other things that may or may not be true. Um, low income, you know, the median uh low income is really a factor that we have to get around. While we have a lot of wealth in Lakewood, the in the median income itself is fairly low. And so people look at, you know, developers look at that well, you know, and seeing past crime. We've really come a long way. And so I think it will really um spur the additional development in the downtown.
It does help, does help the demographic data that
Yeah.
investors look at when they make a sighting decision.
Yeah, and I think we really need to focus on the the M F T E is truly an economic development incentive and tool. Afford, yeah, there is an affordability component, but it really is a an a tool that we we really need. Um, I think those, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Excellent comments. Really, you're exactly on point. It is an economic development tool. It gets the project off the ground.
Yeah.
That's what we need. Anything else, folks, for Ms. Newton? Mr. Caffield.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, strongly recommend that we bring back the this direction that the council has identified for an official motion for you to take action at a regular meeting. And if we can be ready for this Monday, we'll do that if not November fourth. And and the reason for that is that is actually consistent with your protocols and how you do provide direction and guidance to your respective boards and commissions, because this is essentially an update to their work plan. So um unless there's any objection, that would be our recommendation.
That formalizes it. Good idea. My resolution. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Well, thank you, Ms. Noon. Appreciate it as always.
Have a good evening.
Yep. Okay, those items tentatively scheduled for the October twenty one regular city council meeting are as indicated on your agenda tonight. And now we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Good evening again. Um, I do have a number of updates, but I will try and move along smartly. Um, the first is um, you know, desserts in the driveway. Uh, we've had three of them so far. We've got a request from Springbrook Connections for the city council to participate in one of those in their neighborhood. And um we've identified three dates, October twenty fourth, October thirtieth and November thirteenth. And so far, I've heard back from uh the mayor and Councilmember Bell. And the one date that works for those two is November thirteenth. And then I got two noes on October twenty four fourth and a yes and a no on October thirtieth. I I would just ask that if you could just let myself and or the city clerk know if any of those dates work or don't work, and then we can, we can reach out to Springbrook Connections and 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 try and get that schedule. I don't need that tonight, but if you can just let let me know in the next week or so, that would be, that would be greatly appreciated. I've already got yours.
Yeah.
Um, the those of you who are on the count. Um, the, those of you who were on the council back in, you know, uh, two thousand, prior to two thousand thirteen. You might recall that our community connector was the four two uh, Striker Brigade Combat Team. And um, that unit in early two thousand fourteen was deactivated from, from the military. That's how we ended up with our current community connector, the two two Striker Brigade. And um, one of the things that they did when they were deactivated and they stood down because we were their community connector. Is that they provided to us, they donated to us their brigade unit insignia shield, which is a very large. Uh, shield, um, um, and so we have that in one of the H barns. And so um, it's just sitting there and um, just given, quite frankly, um. You know, what they endured overseas on a number of multiple um, multiple deployments in both Iraq and Afghanistan. Including being the last military, uh, US Army brig- brigade level uh, coming out of Iraq as part of Iraqi uh, freedom. Um, I think there's an opportunity to recognize the four two. And so um, I'm gonna be coming back to you here in the next few months or so with an idea of maybe where to place that, perhaps in a roundabout in Lake City. Given we have a lot of veterans that drive through there. Um, I do wanna let you know, I was at a military event not too long ago and. Man, young man, well, he's not young anymore, that I used to serve with, um, had been the command sergeant major of the four two during one of those deployments. And when I mentioned to him that we had a shield, he was like, oh, my gosh. And when I suggested maybe we do something to recognize it, he thought that would be a good idea. And certainly the, the men and women that served in that brigade would, would appreciate that and maybe also have a nice, you know, memorial plaque just recognizing who and what they are. Since, you know, in these days, a lot of military units, they're activated, they're deactivated, they, you know, they come and they go. And um, I think it would just be a nice gesture. Plus, just having it sitting in an H barn, I don't think, I think quite frankly is not very respectful of.
Is it wood? It's wood.
No, it's not. It's, it's like steel or bronze or something.
Hold out.
Oh, God, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And it sat for many years out in front. I remember seeing it out in front of their brigade headquarters, so um.
Yeah, we should do something.
Large, so I'm just wanted to let you know. Um, uh, three grant updates, um, you know, as it relates to, you know, the Clean Buildings Act to bring this building in our police station. Up to standard, you know, we have about a four point two million dollar shortfall on phases two and three, as you heard during the budget presentation. Uh, we did apply for a million dollar energy efficiency grant through the Department of Commerce. We'll see what happens. They do have money, um, it's not a lot, um, so our million dollar request would take a pretty significant chunk of what's available. But we figured, hey, what the heck, uh, it's there, we might as well apply. Plus, we can tell our state legislators that we've been turning over every rock and crumb and trying to find out. But if for some reason we do get the grant, um, you know, we can again make some incremental improvements as it relates to some of our chillers or HVAC system or something like that. So I'm just wanting to give you a heads up on that. Um, also on the intelligent defense side, public defense. Um, we did um, receive a, uh, what's called a SPAR grant, which is a Simple Possession Advocacy and Representation Program Grant. And that helps draw down or pay down our, uh, public defense costs. It's forty two thousand dollars. So, you know, twenty one thousand this year, twenty one thousand next year, cause it's from July to, to June. Um, but again, it's a small amount, but you know, you count your pennies, the dollars take care of themselves and, and so um, we worked with. Uh, Michael Vargas worked with um, our public defender on this and submitted the application and we rewarded the money. So um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Um, also, I think I had previously mentioned, um. You know, we uh, we have some requirements in the development services world, so we're looking at some different systems as it relates to permit tracking. And we received a two hundred and forty thousand dollar grant from, again, from State Department of Commerce called uh, Paper to Digital Grant. And so we're actually going through an RFQ process right now, or P process, to see if there's any, you know, systems out there that would meet the need that the state has. But also meet our needs as well. So more, more, more to follow on that, but again, just wanted to let you know.
High level, how would that differ from the PALS like system?
So we would transition away from PALS because PALS right now, Pierce County, they're focusing on their requirements and not so much our requirements. And so that's why we're doing this, to focus on our requirements.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the um, uh, North Clear Zone Property Acquisition, so uh, September thirtieth came and went. And uh, the United States Air Force uh, got back to us and they said that they have five hundred thousand dollars and not five mil. Well, we wanted five million. We needed five million. So we got, we got five hundred thousand. Um, so right now with that five hundred thousand dollars, coupled with some state grants that the city has been able to accumulate over the last few years. We have a pot of money of three point six million, plus we're gonna be requesting another million from the state as part of the upcoming legislative session, so we have four point six million. Um, so I have two comments here. One is, we're gonna be reevaluating our options in which, you know, there is a property owner that's willing to sell, but are they gonna wait? Cause again, we gotta wait until June on whether or not we get the other million, cause it's about a five million dollar acquisition. Um, but we're gonna be evaluating some options, so we'll keep you updated on that. And then secondly, um, we are a little frustrated internally, given the fact that. You know, the, you know, we're, we're, we're the ones who are kind of carrying all the water on this whole thing and um.
It's not our problem.
You know, we're supposed to be getting five million, so um, we're gonna be also talking internally about whether or not we need to take a pause on this. And have some conversations with some higher reps in the military because it's a priority for us and it's supposedly a provide, a priority for them. But if it is a priority for them, why didn't we get five million? That's exactly right, Mayor. So I would just say more, more to follow on that as well.
Yeah.
I think I had mentioned to you about a month ago that um, uh, Chief Smith um, had been contacted by the International Association of Police Chiefs to do a, a kind of a video. Uh, on, on Lakewood PD, um, with a specific focus on our flock cameras as well as our um, retail theft. Um, enforcement program. And so they were out here last week doing some filming and they got some, they got, so I, so I saw a draft or like a preliminary cut, if you will, of the video this morning. And uh, you know, and I think I shared with you some examples of what happened, you know, how, what they did for other communities. I have to tell you, um, Chief, Chief Smith and his folks, it's, it's really, really good. I mean, it's, it's really, really good. And the chief, how it comes across is just absolutely fantastic. So we hope to have a final cut of that, hopefully sometime this week. And of course, we'll, we'll share.
Who's doing the video work again?
It's uh, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And then this will, and then this will be presented um, at their international conference in Boston later this month.
Great.
So, um, but just.
And they select the communities that they wanna do the video work in?
That's correct. The, and the reason they chose Lakewood is because of the innovation, the creativity that, that we have here in, in, you know, in, in Lakewood. So that's how, yeah, so it wasn't just by chance, it was because we're doing things differently and, you know, we're just not talking about it. We're actually walking the walk. It is the, it's uh, next, it's either next week or this week. Yeah, it's like that. Yeah, so, yeah, so. Um, also, um, the Chambers Creek Canyon Trail Project, you know, um, I know a number of you went to the ribbon cutting event earlier this year. Um, if you recall, there was supposed to be a second bridge that was supposed to be built to that, but because they only received one bid and it was very, very expensive. They decided to push that off. So uh, Pierce County recently approached us again, not just us, but also University Place. And said, well, we would like to do essentially, uh, these are my words here, but a change order. And actually now include the bridge as part of phase two sometime in twenty twenty five. They're estimating that to be three million dollars. Um, they're requesting that both the cities of Lakewood and University Place contribute five hundred thousand dollars. And that we uh, commit to that sometime in twenty twenty five. So um, I just wanna let you know, um, how we have responded is um, um, um. On a number of fronts, one is in, in Pierce County, you know, they're, they're contributing a million, which is great, but they have park impact fees. Uh, so we communicated, hey, this gotta come out of our general fund. We just don't have that. We also have much higher priority park projects right now. And we've listed off what those are. Um, but also, and I think most importantly, and this is something that Mary Dawsworth communicated. That this project would really do well at the next round of RCO funding requests in two years. And, and, and further draw down the contributions that any of the public agencies have to, have to contribute here. So um, we don't see that there's a rush here to do this, but rather wait. Um, plus the fact that they only got one bid. And it's very expensive. We don't feel that that is fiduciary, we don't, we don't feel that that is being fiduci- financially responsible.
Right.
So um, that's kind of where we are. Things could change, but that's what we have communicated to Pierce County at this, at this point in time on that. Um, also want to let you know, Camp Murray, um, uh, they had a conversation with representatives from Fish and Wildlife, the AG's office. As well as their own internal department and representative of the governor's office showed up. And so um, long story short, really no objections to them signing the MOU. We're just kind of waiting for them to sign the MOU. And then meanwhile, we're standing by to move forward on, um, you know, going through an RFP process to hire somebody to help with the master, master planning process. On, 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 on that. Um, also before the end of the year, I'd like to have uh, Bill Adamson from SSMCP come in and just give you an update on what's happening there. Including, and maybe next week or week after, I'll have a better update for you on the Washington statewide defense impact study that. Um, that SSMCP worked with the Lieutenant Governor on, on pulling together. And uh, so just kind of keep you appraised, appraised on that. Um, as it relates to your calendar, uh, this Thursday, uh, Western State Hospitals have their groundbreaking ceremony. I know you've all been invited and I think some of you. Will, will be attending. Um, next Tuesday, October twenty second, Mayor's Coffee House and uh, planning and Public Works Department. So Jeffrey Mack will be, be down there. Uh, then as you go into November, November seventh is SSMCP Elected Officials Council. And I know Mayor, um, as one of the co-chairs, you'll be um, spearheading and, and, and leading that. Um, and then November twelfth, um, it's a half day, um, but one of the things that, that um, United Way does. They do every year, they do a United Way Poverty to Possibility Summit. And uh, I know over the years I've attended that, and so if you do have an opportunity or some time to attend that, I would highly recommend it. Donna Panapento and her team, they do a fantastic job putting that, putting that on. And um, again, it's eight to noon on, um, that's a Tuesday. Tuesday, November, November, November twelfth. So um, that's uh, that's, that's what I have. Oh, and then you have a special study session this Wednesday at six PM right here.
Six PM?
Gotcha. So, that's what I got.
Very good. Any questions? Appreciate that. Yeah, I'm interested to see what we can do with that Striker Brigade memorabilia. That would be, that would be a good thing. Yeah, it'd be great out there. Okay, so let's turn briefly to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I'll be here on Wednesday for the special uh, meeting. And then next Monday I'll be out, so I will not be attending next Monday's meeting.
Very good.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bokey.
So on that Springbrook one, any of the dates work for me? So if the October twenty fourth doesn't work for you two. So it looks like the thirtieth or November thirteenth is right now.
Does that work okay for you, the thirteenth?
Both of them are wide open for me.
I could do the thirtieth if.
And I'm not, you know, I, I think I missed one anyway because I had something else going on.
Yeah, we don't all have to be there.
So um, that's cool. So let's take the twenty fourth off the board. And so it's November thirteenth or October, whatever works for the majority of you guys. Um. I, I should ask you, the city manager, did we get this worked out with Councilmember Laura Selidum? The ch- the chief is gonna go, Chief Smith's gonna go to the South Sound nine one one board meeting.
Affirmative. The chief is the alternate. He'll be attending.
Okay, so the, so Mary and I do not have to go.
You can still go, but the chief will be sitting in as the alternate.
He would be sitting in as the alternate, so we're okay. Okay, okay, great, thank you. Um, PCRC Thursday, but it looks like kind of just a, in more of an informative agenda. Um, and Truck and Tractor Day was great. Packed. Um, Councilmember Ross can speak more to it, um, but really a neat event. Um, the weather was, of course, incredible, but um, packed with kids. And so really, really vibrant. I mean, traffic was backed up on Silicon Boulevard. It was, it was well attended and it was a lot of fun. Um, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have to agree. Truck and Tractor Day was a lot of fun. The weather was good. One of the things that we noticed, cause I was going opposite of crossing Silicon Boulevard, I was coming down Silicon Boulevard. And I set from Phillips Road, not Phillips Road, Hipkins Road to the entrance, it took me fifteen minutes to get in. Because the cars coming the opposite way were turning, so when our light changed, it was backed up. We couldn't turn. So that was, that was a lot of people complaining about that, but the track, we had great time. I don't think, I take my great granddaughter, I think I have more fun than she does, but that's been fun. Um. I have been selected for the AMC Civic Leadership Class and it, uh, for.
AMC stands for?
Um, the um. AMC Civic Leadership too, it's the Air Mobility. Air Mobility to Command Reward.
Okay.
Rewarded, which is, I think is, from what I understand, is higher than the honorary commander.
Oh, great.
So it's something that I haven't experienced before, but I'm looking forward to.
Very nice.
Yeah, so we're gonna go, I think there's gonna be two trips a year.
Nice. There you go.
Yeah, I'm excited. Yeah, I was surprised. I got a letter from Scott Air Force Base, which was a surprise for me. But I'm, I'm excited. I'd like to learn about how they train the, the airmen and all that, the equipment stuff that they go through.
That's fantastic.
Pretty soon I'm gonna be wearing wings.
There you go.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I thought you already did because you're our angel. Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah, you like that? Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, well, I don't have a lot uh, to uh, say, except we got PCRC this week on Thursday, so I'll certainly attend that. It's been otherwise a fairly busy, busy week, so. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, looks like.